Committee of the whole. Call this meeting to order and ask any member of committee to declare pecuniary interest now or where it may arise during the meeting. Counselor Loosely.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I do have one. Section four, A, A and B, emergency medical services information reports due to the fact that my son works part-time for the EMS. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? And just a reminder, it would be good if those online would keep your cameras on the whole time during the meeting, please. It helps staff keep track of things. Item number three, Infrastructure and Development Services Division. There's five items to receive and file. Deputy Warden Agar moves, and Counselor Bean seconds. All in favor. That'd be carried. Thank you. Three B is information reports. There's three there. Unless somebody has something on one of those to pull, I'd look for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Bushy moves, and Counselor Cook seconds. All in favor. Let's carry it as well. And let's see here. Any other business for Infrastructure and Development Services? Seeing none, move on to item number four, Public Health Services Division and EMS. There are two information reports there. Look for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Hand and Counselor Sageman, all in favor. That's carried. And under other business, on behalf of County Council in the County of Lampton, I'd like to acknowledge Paramedic Services Week and express our appreciation for the work of everyone at Lampton Emergency Medical Services. This year marks the 25th anniversary of Lampton EMS, from the time the operation of ambulances was passed down from the province to municipalities. Since that time, the services provided by our team has evolved with more hours of service and a much broader range of skills and treatments available for patients in need. We are very fortunate to have such compassionate, highly-trained paramedics caring for the ill and injured throughout our county. Thank you for all that you do. Is there any other business for public health? Seeing none, move on to five, Cultural Services Division. There are four information reports there. If there's none to be pulled, look for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Ferguson and Counselor Loosely. All in favor. Let's carry it. And five C, reports requiring a motion. The first one is regarding Museums, Gallery and Archives Collections Management for March 2025. Counselor Case and Counselor Cook seconds. All in favor. That's carried. And B, report regarding new hours of operation Florence Counselor Broad, anything to add to that? If not, motion to receive and file. Counselor White and seconded by Counselor Sageman, all in favor. That's carried. And item C, report regarding libraries donations from January 1st to March 31st. Motion to receive and file this one. Counselor Bushy and Counselor Atkinson, all in favor. That's carried. Is there any other business under Cultural Services? Seeing none, I have number six, Long Term Care Division. First is a correspondence to receive and file memorandum from the Ministry of Long Term Care. Look for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Bean, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. All in favor. Let's carry it. Six B, information report regarding 2025 Quality Initiative Report, Long Term Care. There's no questions. Counselor Hand moves. Counselor Cook seconds. All in favor. Let's carry it. Is there any other business under Long Term Care? Seeing none, item number seven, Finance Facilities and Acquisitions Division. There are no reports. Is there any other business for finance facilities and acquisitions? Moves us to number eight, Corporate Services Division. Item AA, information regarding court services, first quarter stats and activity. There's no question. Move by Counselor White to receive and file, seconded by Counselor Atkinson. All in favor. That'd be carried. Item number nine, Social Services Division. There are two information reports here, one regarding the Lampton County homelessness enumeration and the second one regarding Housing Services Statistical Report, Quarter One. There are no, nothing to pull. Move to receive and file these. Counselor Bean, Counselor Hand, all in favor. That'd be carried. And nine B, we have two reports requiring a motion. The first one is regarding Housing Services Capital Asset Management Plan Update. Okay, we just got technical problems. Okay, we're back. That report under nine B A was moved by Counselor Bushy. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Sageman? Counsel Bradley, please.
Well, thank you very much for the report. Just a question to the authors. I would not want people to think this is the actual snapshot of the number of homeless people in the urban area. I think it's a good, it's a good effort, but I'm asking the question to them that this does not, the number looks very, very low, and that does not reflect the reality of what we're dealing with. So I put to the authors, what do you think the actual number is beyond what you've seen today and represented today?
Yeah, that, that would be up at nine AA, Counsel Bradley.
And that's where I thought we were at when we came back on. Sorry.
Did you want to back up to that one?
No, I want to deal with the homeless enumeration report. That's the one I was referring to.
Okay. Ms. Colasanti, are you prepared to handle that, please? Thank you.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Bradley. I guess, are you asking about the enumeration report and the numbers in it? Because the enumeration report is simply just a snapshot of, you know, one or two days. We like to refer to the by-name list because we feel it's a much better statistical reporting tool for the number of homelessness in Lampton County. The enumeration, to be honest, we do this because we have to under the federal government, but because we have a robust by-name list now, we don't necessarily know that it is 100% accurate in the enumeration report. Because again, it's people going out, just capturing anyone who may appear to be homeless or experiencing homelessness over a period of 24 hours.
Okay, so then, is the number 20% higher, 100% higher? I'm just trying to get a handle because this number will become the identified number. And I don't believe personally it reflects the actual number of people that are struggling right now.
Sure. So our, I'm actually going to call upon Ian Haney, our manager of homelessness prevention. He can give you the most up-to-date numbers from our by-name list and compare them to the enumeration, which was done several months ago.
Thank you, Mr. Haney.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden. So as Ms. Colasanti alluded to, enumeration is a limited methodology that we follow because we receive federal funding. It is not as robust and accurate as our comprehensive, real-time by-name list, which is a collection of comprehensive understanding from all of our local service providers. The number currently on our by-name list is right around 270 unique individuals, whereas you'll see in the report for enumeration, and again, this was completed back in November of 2024, the number is much lower at 228. So again, we would refer folks to the active, real-time, robust, comprehensive by-name list for accurate information about homelessness. And this is reflected in a live dashboard that we have on the county website.
Okay, so that didn't answer my question. What is your estimate on the actual number beyond what you presented to us today? Because it is beyond that. Or you're just saying this is, this is the way it is and...
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you for the question through you, Warden. The accurate, real-time number, the current number of individuals experiencing homelessness, this includes all those that are provisionally accommodated, including couch surfing, those that are in shelter, transitional housing, and are experiencing unsheltered homelessness, is approximately 270. It's a real-time number, and it's, it's displayed in the data dashboard that we have on our county website.
Counsel McRoberts.
Thank you through the chair, to Mr. Haney. I received a call from a reporter the other day, and we were speaking about those that are living absolutely rough, that are not in a facility, that are not being housed in any way. And the question put before me was that a quote had been given of only 20 people living rough. I've been out with different groups. I go out myself. I'm, I'm concerned. Did something happen in the last week? And I, I am going to be happy if you tell me that we have found somewhere for a lot of these folks to go. Is that a quote number? Was it misquoted that we have only 20 rough people in all of Lampton County that are not housed, that are living rough?
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you very much for the question. Happy to further our community understanding on what is a dynamic and real-time, of course, list of individuals experiencing homelessness. Now, compared to last year, where we had at peak over 90 individuals on any given night experiencing unsheltered homelessness, our numbers have drastically decreased and due strong part to incredibly strong housing outcomes from our collection of local service providers. The number of individuals that experience unsheltered homelessness, which is captured in GIS mapping that we complete, a dedicated homelessness information system, and is a collective understanding from various, in fact, a vast list of professional outreach teams across Health and Human Services, is approximately 20 individuals on any given night. Now, across a period of a month, which is what we report in another live data dashboard on the county website, we may see perhaps double that number of individuals experience unsheltered homelessness at some point in that month. But for right now, yes, that number is fairly accurate for the number of individuals on any given one night that are experiencing unsheltered homelessness.
Follow-up, Counsel McRoberts.
Thank you through the chair. I, I was just out seven days ago, and I can tell you that number is definitely more than doubled. I'm, I would like to see if we could have Sarnia bylaw, our police, the county, the outreach teams. I, I don't know if you're all communicating like daily. There should be. I mean, we've got the technology to get ahold of each other and find the new places where we have folks that are creating these encampments, which is one or two or more people. But I know that there is at least 40 as of seven days ago. So unless that 20 people have been placed in some kind of shelter in the last seven days, I can't imagine that that number, I just don't want the community to think the county is seeing one number, but the people that are living in Sarnia are totally seeing a whole other number of people that are living rough. Thank you.
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you very much. And of course, our collection of local service providers are always open to feedback and identifying new encampment locations. This is a common ongoing practice. The collective understanding of who is experiencing unsheltered homelessness is contributed by all of the local outreach professional teams. This includes our local CHIC team, Lampton Public Health Outreach Team, North Lampton Community Health Center, of course, Social Services, and Sarnia Police Services as well, their IMPACT team. We meet regularly. As I said, we facilitate this robust, comprehensive data through a dedicated information system, dedicated mapping. And while this is a very transient and dynamic population, we have this robust local data through our by-name list so that we can serve individuals effectively.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, we have a mover and a seconder for nine B A. All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you, Mr. Haney. That moves us to nine B B, report regarding Lampton Hart Hub staffing. Counselor McRoberts, please.
I'm sorry, through the chair. I was trying to wave at you for A, Part B, for the Housing Statistical Report.
Oh, okay.
I would just like to know, because last council meeting, we created a new motion to say that supportive housing and affordable housing were both going to be the priorities. So now I would like to come back and say, is that going to change us actually making a goal of St. Bartholomew's property that we just purchased? Are we just going to set our minds to making that supportive and affordable housing all in one?
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor McRoberts. At the July council meeting, you're going to hear an updated report from Flourish and an updated report from Inwell. All of that information will be in there, and we can fully discuss that at the next meeting when we have that information in front of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Dennis.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I think it is absolutely essential that the neighbors of St. Bartholomew's get, or that they're, that they have input. I've received a lot of contact with them, and they should be consulted with this. And, and I, from what I understand, they were promised, a lot of them felt it was strange that the county would buy the property without consult, consultation with the neighbors. But that's, you know, putting the chicken ahead of the, the egg. But anyways, I feel that they, that we should be responsible and, and, and we should be consulting with the neighbors of St. Bartholomew's. There's no question, I'm the only one sitting on council that's been involved in 2,000 real estate transactions, and there's no question that that is going to affect the property values in that area. It is going to affect them big time. And, and I'm telling you, if you thought that we had a blowback from the neighbors at, at Gloralee, you're going to see, that's nothing. That's child's play compared to what we're going to see at St. Bart. So I highly recommend, I'd actually like to make a motion that we do have, that the residents of St., that neighborhood, that we have a consultation with them, actually. It's only fair that they have a say, that they're even educated as to what is going to take place there, and, and we just don't shove it down their throats.
Okay, I believe there is consultation, but Ms. Colasanti can respond to that. And we have a motion on the floor now, so.
Just a follow-up from the last report that was received at council regarding St. Bart. We had said at that time that the site was under demolition. We've done an RFP for Architectural Services. From there, we'll go through the regular zoning process. All of that will include extensive community consultations, the regular work that would happen with the neighbors. So that process is in place and will be happening over the coming months, but we're not there yet. As I said, we're just in the demolition process right now.
Counselor Dennis.
I, I don't think people are opposed to traditional affordable housing for seniors like are there, for people that are down on their luck with respect to, it's a tough economy out there. It's, you know, it's expensive to live and so on. But transitional housing, I, I believe there's going to be some real pushback against that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a mover and a seconder. That's for nine B B. All in favor of that? Opposed if any? That's carried. Any other business under Social Services? Counselor Case, please.
Yes, Mr. Warden, through you. Actually, it's a very positive message I'd like to relay today to everybody, and has to do with our Social Services Department, the Lampton Kent Board of Education, and a new childcare provider. Not that long ago, the letter went home to our local residents that have children at East Lampton Elementary School, stating that the before-school and the after-school program was going to be canceled. I reached out to Ms. Colasanti, who actually was on holidays, left a message on her phone, and even though she was on holidays, she reached back out to me. And then, working with the county of Lampton, as well as the local school board and many other folks involved, we were able, we were able to come to a very positive resolution in all this. We got together yesterday, and there was a bit of a photo op taken. And the positive message is that we not only have got that service back at East Lampton Elementary School, the before and after-school process, but now it's expanded. We in Warwick Township are no different than everybody else in this room. We're under service when it comes to child spaces. And yesterday was announced that we are now going to be providing 15 more full-time childcare spaces at East Lampton Elementary School. I cannot say enough thank yous to Valerie, Kim Godden, and everybody else that was involved with this. It really is one of those situations where you take a negative and you turn it into a positive. Also want to make sure I mention Martina Jackson, one of our residents who brought this to my attention when the letter first went to the, went home to the, to the parents of these students that were enjoying the service. So again, I just want to say a heartfelt Warwick Township thank you to Ms. Colasanti, Ms. Godden, the Board of Education, and the parents that were involved in this. The resolution is a very positive one. We look for more positive announcements the next year to come. So I think it's important, when we see such a positive thing happen, where these relationships we have with one another really do bear fruit at the end of the day. So I say to you, Ms. Colasanti, and to your team, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Counsel Case. Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Can we just have an update on where we are at on the Hart Hubs? There's a staffing report, but we've been waiting now for months on a location. Is there any update on that location?
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Bradley. There will be some communications coming out through the Hart Hub there. We're doing a coordinated communication because, as you know, it's a consortium of five partners led by Canadian Mental Health Association. The main hub, still the preferred location, is on La Keel, where CMHA is located right now. So the Housing and Homeless Resource Center would relocate there once CMHA is able to relocate to their new offices. So there's a few moving parts. We don't have a final location on the beds yet, and the supportive housing will be scattered throughout the community with CMHA, and the Inwell housing will be part of Lampton's community housing. So those pieces are out there, but I would imagine we should have more communication fairly shortly. We've not signed the final contract with the Ministry of Health yet, so that's also a bit of a challenge. But we do have a communications team together. Lisa is part of that from the county, and hopefully we'll have some communication out to the whole community soon.
Can I just follow up on that, Mr. Warden?
Please, go ahead.
The 30 beds are the critical part of this, and that's why there was such, such excitement about the announcement back quite some time ago. Where is that at? That reselling process, I've been waiting patiently to see an application for months and months, and so far have not seen one to go through that process. and months, and so far have not seen one to go through that process.
Ms. Colasanti, please.
I can't speak directly to that for Blue Water Health because the beds fall under them, but I do understand that a zoning application has been submitted, and I think they're waiting on a response.
Any other business for Social Services? Seeing none? Look for a motion to go in camera, discuss the report providing instructions regarding negotiations between the county and a third party relating to a lease agreement. Counsel Case and Counsel Atkinson seconds, all in favor. That's carried. We'll meet in Committee Room Three, please. Look for a motion to adjourn. Counsel Bean and Counsel Ferguson, all in favor. That's carried. Thank you.